And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us across the vast Louisiana plain once again, where we are elevating the cause of constitutional conservatism, advancing the case for constitutional freedom and conservative candidates in our state, and steadily draining day by day the Louisiana swamp. My name is Chris.
And I'm Danielle, and this is the State of Freedom, brought to you by freedom-loving, Louisiana-first patriots. Hello, State of Freedom warriors. Thank you for inviting us to be part of your day. We are so grateful for you, the best listening family anybody could possibly hope for. We are only here because of your encouragement, your prayers, and your financial support. If you have been looking for a way to support us, to advertise with us, or send us feedback, I have great news for you. You can do that by going to our website at freedomstate.us. Drop us a line there at info@freedomstate.us. We would really appreciate it if you'd also help us get the word out and spread the reach of the State of Freedom. Please like the show on whatever platform you're listening to us on, subscribe to it, share it. You can share short clips instead of full episodes if you'd like to do that from our YouTube and Rumble channels, and the links to those are always in the show notes and over on freedomstate.us. Well, today we are going to be delving into the big-ticket items from last week's special session for congressional redistricting. But first, as always, let me read the scripture of the day. It is Psalm chapter 20, verses four through nine, and it says, "May God give you every desire of your heart and carry out your every plan as you go to battle. When you succeed, we will celebrate and shout for joy. Flags will fly when victory is yours. Yes, God will answer your prayers, and we will praise Him. I know God gives me all that I ask for and brings victory to His anointed king. My deliverance cry will be heard in His holy heaven. By His mighty hand miracles will manifest through His saving strength. Some find their strength in weapons and wisdom, but my miracle deliverance can never be won by men. Our boast is in the Lord our God, who makes us strong and gives us victory. Our enemies will not prevail; they will only collapse and perish in defeat, while we will rise up, full of courage. Give victory to our King, O God, the day we call on you. Give us your answer." Let's live in great expectation that the Lord will give us every desire for our heart for this legislative term. So many have been in prayer, and this moment is one that we have prayed and worked so hard to see come into reality. Let's remember that we're not trusting in people. We're trusting in the Lord our God, who so many of the legislators that are now in office felt called by to pursue their position, and people like Representative Danny McCormick, who we've had on recently, and so many others are leaning on the Lord to guide them and to help them navigate the political waters and to make the right decisions. Continue to believe and pray for them. We will see miracles in the legislature this year. We will see Louisiana's name in the news for many positive things. Declare this with me. Our state will be leading the way boldly in righteousness, and every time we do, we will boast in the Lord our God, who brought us this far and has much farther to take us.
And indeed, He has brought us a long way, Danielle. If you look at the last legislative session and all of the accomplishments of La Cag, which we now have in graph form, so that everyone can see exactly the progress that we've made to protect Louisiana citizens in Louisiana. Now, most recently, we just finished, as you alluded to at the start of the show, we just finished the first, was it extraordinary session?
It wasn't just special, it was extraordinary.
Yes, it wasn't just special, it was an extraordinary session that the governor called to address primarily two very, very important issues. One is the congressional redistricting, and the other one is the closed primary issue, which many citizens across Louisiana want. And yes, because you can hear my voice, Danielle, we survived the session.
We survived the session, and this is all brought up by the governor's call, which, if you're not familiar with this term, which I wasn't before this session, the governor's call is the legal document, which the governor outlines the time limits and the subject matter limits of the legislation that can be considered. So as Chris mentioned, this session was primarily for redistricting and primary, moving us toward closed primaries. But the main crux for this really was congressional redistricting, and that was kind of the top of the list. Chris, can you give us a little background on the redistricting fight and the directive from the court?
Yes, absolutely. The reason why Governor Landry called the special session on redistricting was because plaintiffs had challenged the 2022 map that was passed by our state legislature. They challenged that in federal court, and Judge Shelley Dick, the Obama appointee, left-leaning judge in federal court, ruled after what's called a summary hearing, not a full trial on the merits, not all of the evidence, not all of the testimony. It's just a short summary proceeding where she looks at certain things and then either grants or doesn't grant the preliminary injunction. Well, she granted the plaintiff's preliminary injunction, basically saying, yes, the plaintiffs are right, this current voting map from 2022 violates the Constitution because it does not include an additional majority-minority congressional district in Louisiana. So she granted it, and then she said to the legislature, either draw up another map to send to me for my review that includes an additional majority-minority district in Louisiana, or don't do anything and come back into court, I think it's in February, and plan to have a full trial where you can defend the 2022 map and convince me that the current map is constitutional. So Governor Landry pursuant to that order chose to call a special session of the legislature so that they could consider legislation pursuant to Judge Dick's order, and that's why we were there.
And the premise for this lawsuit that was brought was that the most recent census, which I guess would have been the 2020 census, Chris, showed that there was an increase in the percentage of minorities in the population of Louisiana. Is that right, to 30%?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay, so what were the options that the legislature ultimately had? They were called in by the governor. What could they do with the direction from, I guess the governor gave a little direction, go do something, and then the judge had some direction in her, I don't even know what you call it.
First, she ruled that the 2022 map was unconstitutional. She said, either go back in and draw a new map that's acceptable, or don't do anything and be prepared to come in here and have a full trial on the constitutionality of the current map that we have, which does not have an additional majority-minority district. So those were their options, and I'll tell you that it was Speaker Mike Johnson's position that the legislature didn't need to do anything. They didn't need to go in and draw another map, because the current map we have is fully constitutional, and the state should go into federal court and argue for its constitutionality, which the legislature did not follow Mike Johnson's advice on that, our Speaker of the House. Now, Speaker Johnson is no slouch when it comes to constitutional law. He is a constitutional scholar and is broadly known as a real student of the Constitution. He's argued and litigated more constitutional cases prior to being elected to Congress than anyone, any lawyer I know. So he's no slouch, and he put out a very strong statement about really what was at risk here. When you go back in, he said, and you just offer up a new map, creating an additional majority-minority congressional seat in Louisiana, not only is it arguably unconstitutional to do that, but you are shifting the balance of power in the United States Congress. We currently have a one-vote margin in the Congress, Republican vote. You do this, you're shifting the balance of power, you destroy a historic speakership in the House of Mike Johnson. Scalise is the majority leader, he would be gone, and then the Democrats, they take over. So the stakes could not be any higher than they are.
Well, you're so right, and the map that we saw as an output from this state legislature is very different from what we expected to see from a new conservative legislature. If you look at it, which we can put a link to it in the show notes, it is the textbook definition of gerrymandering, and as you said, Chris, it hands the Democrats an additional congressional seat on a silver platter at a time where the conservative majority in the US House is razor-thin. Now, what do you think the reason for this was, that they would do something so abominable? Because, I mean, if you look at this map, anyone can see that it is ridiculous.
Yes, obviously, I think that, in fact, I know that there was significant pressure put on the Republican members of the legislature by Senator John Kennedy and also by Governor Landry, to create a map that has an additional majority-minority congressional seat. There's already one, and they wanted another one, and I think the legislators yielded to that. And of course, they didn't come right out and say that they were yielding to political pressure. They said that they didn't have any choice but to do it, because they were ordered to do it by a federal judge. But they weren't ordered to do it by a federal judge, they were given options. That was one of the options. If they hadn't drawn this map, they could have gone right back into federal court and argued for the constitutionality of our current map, and even if she had ruled that it was not constitutional, they could have appealed it to the Fifth Circuit and all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States. And when you're talking about something of this magnitude, about shifting the balance of power, one vote between us and fully unleashed Biden-Schumer agenda on Louisiana, it's worth fighting for all the way to the top.
I'll correct you on one point, Chris, which is, we can't blame, I don't think we can blame John Kennedy for this one. We can blame him for something else, and don't worry, we will blame him. But for this, as I understand it, Governor Landry was really the strong weight behind pushing for this really ridiculous and, I think, terrible map that does not, in my view, and in the view of, I think, many people who testified, Chris, it doesn't hold together communities. So whenever you think about what are the important things behind congressional districts, the district should be representative of the communities that are in it, not chopped up beyond recognition and grouping together, people that don't even live remotely close to one another, which I think is one of the main things that is a huge weakness in this particular map that ultimately passed. But anyway, you testified before the House and Governmental Affairs Committee on this bill. What was your argument to them on the appropriate constitutional approach? You kind of touched on it. You mentioned the way that it could ladder through the court system, you know, should it need to, but what did you share in your testimony?
Well, before I answer that, I do want to thank you for correcting me on Senator Kennedy. Senator Kennedy didn't weigh in at all on the redistricting. It was Governor Landry who was pushing hard for this new map, this new legislative map, creating an additional majority-minority district, not Senator Kennedy. That is another issue, you're right. But my main argument before the House and Governmental Affairs Committee is essentially what I just alluded to, is that what do you really have to lose? So you're just going to go in here and pass a map that creates an additional majority-minority district, okay? If you don't do that, if you do nothing, and then go into court and argue and lose before Judge Dick, arguing the constitutionality of our current map, the worst thing she's going to do is create an additional majority-minority seat. So you're essentially giving in without even a fight, knowing that you couldn't end up in any worse position with her than you are right now, and you're just giving it up. You need to go in and make the argument on the merits for the constitutionality of our current map, as it is right now. And, you know, it's just, especially as I said, even if she were to rule against you after a full trial on the merits and say, oh, it's unconstitutional, and then draw whatever map she says, then guess what? You got the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeal, and then you have the Supreme Court of the United States. And I will remind you, Danielle, Paul Hurd testified before the House Governmental Affairs Committee the very same day that I did, and he is of the opinion, he is a seasoned constitutional lawyer, did a great job testifying, and his position is that this new map, the legislature just passed, is clearly unconstitutional, because it is totally racially gerrymandered. In fact, 90% of this map was previously declared unconstitutional in the 90s, as it related to Cleo Field's former congressional district, almost the very same map. So they're going to have major problems going forward in getting this map to pass ultimate constitutional scrutiny, and I don't think it's going to pass. I'll tell you, Paul Hurd's going to sue over it very, very soon.
Well, and just to get back to your point on the constitutionality of it, you and I dug into this because I was really questioning whether the judge had the authority under the Constitution to draw a map in the first place, and she does not. Under the Louisiana state constitution, it is the legislature that draws the map, and I was very shocked to see this, but in the Louisiana state constitution, if the legislature fails to do an appropriate map as set out by the courts, as set out by the census, really, then the Louisiana Supreme Court can do this, can draw it for them, but not a federal judge. So there's no provision in the Constitution that a federal judge would be able to draw a map. So the whole premise, I think, was false, and my hope really is, Chris, and I've been saying this for a little minute now, is that the whole point of this terrible abomination of ridiculous map that, for instance, splits East Baton Rouge into three different congressional districts, is that the map gets challenged itself because it is so horrible, and that by, it's not just horrible, it's horrible by every legal metric set out. Paul Hurd did a great job, and you mentioned him. It's so horrible by every single legal metric that building a congressional district is built on, that it has the absolute best chance to be struck down in the courts, because it is that horrible.
And there's a chance that that may be the strategy behind this. It's very, very possible. I mean, you had a brilliant lawyer who has studied this for years, and this is the focus of his practice. And he said very confidently that this map that is going to be passed by the legislature, this most recent one, will not pass constitutional scrutiny. It's going to be struck down. It's probably not going to be struck down by Judge Dick, but it will be struck down either by the Fifth Circuit or by the US Supreme Court. And where are we then? Once that happens, guess what? We're back to 2022, right? We're back to our original map, and at that point, hopefully, we will make progress on that and get a hearing in federal court on that map if it's challenged, and have a court decide that it's constitutional. And even if Judge Dick again doesn't, we still have the Fifth Circuit or the Supreme Court. Whichever way it goes, I believe ultimately, this is all going to be decided either by the Fifth Circuit or by the Supreme Court of the United States.
Well, time will tell, Chris. I think there's a lot of things this year that we can say time will tell. The entire direction of this legislature and governor are amongst those things that we can say time will tell.
Oh, absolutely. And did we mention, I think you did, I'm not sure, did we mention that this, I think I did mention that this map was previously declared unconstitutional, twice, and yet they're doing it again. So there's every reason to believe that it could happen a third time, and maybe three is a charm.
Well, Chris, you know, that point is, just really makes it impossible for me to believe that this map wasn't brought on purpose. And I certainly hope that there's a broader strategy at play here. I hope that this is a strategy to get us a map that's really representative of the people of Louisiana, of the actual communities of Louisiana, rather than trying to reach some racial goal, trying to gerrymander and chop up the state to achieve some kind of weird goal that doesn't actually reflect the voice or the will of the people of Louisiana. So I don't know, time will tell.
And going around the state, Danielle, as you said, and picking up chunks of black voters here, and chunks of black voters here, and chunks of black voters here, regardless of how absolutely incongruous it is, just to get enough black votes to create a majority-minority black district is the essence of racial gerrymandering. That's exactly what it is. And so, again, Paul Hurd was right about that, and I think he's going to prevail on that argument. I do want to say, just for our listeners' benefit, I'd like to read Speaker Johnson's, it's not long, it's a short tweet, in which Speaker Johnson expresses his opinion on this issue. And he said, "We've just seen and we're very concerned with the congressional map presented in the Louisiana legislature." Now, it's passed now. "It remains my position," Mike says, "that the existing map is constitutional, our existing map, and that the legal challenges to it should be tried on the merits, so the state has adequate opportunity to defend its merits. Should the state not prevail at trial, there are multiple other map options that are legally compliant and do not require the unnecessary surrender of a Republican seat in Congress." And that's exactly what this all comes down to, Danielle. When you're talking about the stakes, the stakes that we're dealing with here, the very real possibility of losing a precious majority in the United States Congress, losing the speakership, losing the majority, it is worth, if there's anything on which we've got to dig our heels in the sand and fight, this is it.
Well, I think many people believe that this is going to end up in the courts. There's no way it's not going to end up in the courts as bad as it is, and because we know that it is a literal textbook definition of gerrymandering, Louisiana has been the poster child for gerrymandering throughout the 90s, as you mentioned. Those gerrymandering districts were literally in my constitutional textbooks when I was in college. So we'll see where this lands. But let's switch gears, Chris, and talk about the other major piece of legislation that we followed this last week, and that was House Bill 17. It was Julie Emerson's bill for closed primaries. Would you just tell us about the bill, Chris?
Yes, and as you know, Danielle, Beryl Omedy, the great Beryl Omedy, was an original co-author on this legislation. Ultimately, because of the way that it was truncated on the Senate side, she ultimately removed her name as an author. But the original version of this bill was very, very good as it came out of the House, and it called for strict closed primaries in all races in Louisiana, included both statewide races, Supreme Court races, and importantly, state legislative races. And when I say strict closed primaries, the bill would have strictly allowed only Republicans to vote in Republican primaries, and only Democrats to vote in Democratic primaries, only independents to vote in independent primaries, only libertarians to vote in libertarian primaries, only Green Party members to vote in Green Party primaries, very strictly closed primaries coming out. And what happened when it got over to the Senate?
So it meets the definition, when they put it out, it met the definition of a closed primary. That's what your point is.
Yes, it strictly provided that if you are not a member of the party, say Democrat Party, you may not, under any circumstances, vote in a Democrat primary. Now, you can obviously, in the general election, when the two candidates emerge, you can vote for whoever you want. But in party primaries, only people who are members of that party may participate in that party's primary elections. And that's the way the bill looked when it came out of the House. Unfortunately, the Senate, as the Senate is apt to do when it should not, they made two very bad changes to the bill that seriously weakened its purpose and seriously gutted the bill. It is still an improvement even now, but it was seriously weakened on the Senate side, and here's how that happened. The first thing the Senate did was it amended the bill to exclude state legislative races from the closed primary system. Well, as you and I have talked about, Danielle, it's so ridiculous. You and I have talked about this many, many times. Under the Ninth and Tenth Amendments of the Constitution, the state legislatures are where the bulwark of our protection is. So having a closed primary system in the state legislature allows us, facilitates the election of strong conservatives and helps to reduce the number of rhinos in the state legislature. So it really, really is troublesome that our legislature, which is two-thirds Republican in both houses, would have excluded on the Senate side legislative races from the purview of the closed primary system. It makes absolutely no sense. The second thing that the Senate did on its side was, it said, okay, we'll keep, Democrats vote Democrat primaries, Republican vote Republican primaries, independents, libertarians, all the rest of it. However, what about the 600,000 unaffiliated voters in Louisiana? Why don't they get to participate in the Democrat or the Republican or the independent primary? Well, the answer is, because they're not a member of those parties. But they felt...
It's not rocket science.
It's not, but they felt they were being disenfranchised if they didn't have the opportunity as unaffiliated voters to vote in Republican or Democrat primaries, which is just total nonsense. You're not being disenfranchised. You can vote, but the requirement for you to vote in a party primary is to become a member of that party. It's not an onerous requirement. It takes about five minutes to do it. So nobody's being constitutionally disenfranchised. That's a red herring argument. And secondly, of course, they can vote for whoever they want in the general election, but that was the big argument. These unaffiliated voters are going to be disenfranchised in primary if we don't allow it. So they made an exception on the Senate side that allows all these unaffiliated voters to vote for whoever they want to, either a Democrat or a Republican in the primaries. And so what is that going to do?
Well, this is the one that we can blame Senator John Kennedy on, because he leaned hard on Republican legislators, and it looked like, on Twitter, it looked like he leaned pretty hard on Jeff Landry to include this path for unaffiliated voters to have a way to vote in a closed party primary. And Chris, at the end of the day, this means now that if you are a no-party person, so, okay, let's remind people, and ourselves, really, Independent Party is a party, the Green Party is a party, the Socialist Party is a party, Republican-Democrat are a party. But there are unaffiliated voters who can vote now, because of this carve-out, in the primary of their choice. Now, they have to choose one, they can't vote in both of them, but they are able to do that.
They are able to do that, yes.
And I just think it completely defeats the purpose. It completely and absolutely defeats the purpose, because, Chris, you had mentioned earlier when we were talking, that voters in New Hampshire are lining up to vote in the Republican primary for president. Well, they're not, maybe, I don't know if they're lining up yet, but they're, would you tell us about what's happening in New Hampshire because they do not have a closed primary?
Absolutely. You have Democrats and, you know, left-leaning voters going in and voting for Nick, I'm sure intending to vote for Nikki Haley in the Republican primary in New Hampshire against Trump, to get her to win the New Hampshire primary against Trump. These are not Republican voters. These are not people who reflect even remotely values that are historically associated with the Republican Party, but they're going to be probably affecting... But they're going to be probably affecting, I hope not, but they could have a very significant influence on the outcome of that primary. So keep in mind, Danielle, but back here to Louisiana, we don't know whether the 600,000 no-party voters in Louisiana reflect the traditional views of the Republican Party or not, or the Democrat Party for that matter, or the Green Party. So my question is, why would these voters be allowed to influence the outcome of those party primaries? Again, if you, our original view, if you want to vote in a Republican or Democratic primary, just become a Republican or a Democrat. The second problem with this, and this is also occurring in other states, what do you think significant numbers of Democrats in Louisiana are going to do, Danielle, if they want to influence a Republican primary to get a rhino into a general election as opposed to a real constitutional conservative? What are those Democrats going to do?
Yeah, why doesn't everyone just switch and become no-party? And then look at here, we have, we have an open primary system all over again. And so, Chris, that's the exact point I was really railing on when we spoke earlier today. The time period allowed for changing party affiliation prior to a primary election is really the best protection we have for a meaningful closed primary elections, closed party primary election system. People need to not be able to switch to no-party at the last minute, even in the last month or two months before an election, because that's a time whenever grassroots organizations are really mobilizing. It's my, it's of my perspective, I'm of the perspective, rather, that those, those changes to your party affiliation, if this is the way we're going to play, which I think we should just close the primaries and really close the primaries, that's, that would be the thing to do. Regardless, I think for people who are trying to get into the election line that they want to get into for their primary, the time period that they can change their party affiliation needs to end before candidates qualify. That would minimize the amount of meddling in a primary election, in my view.
It needs, the time period within which you can switch parties or become a no-party, the time period to do that and be able to vote in the upcoming primary must be before qualifying for, begins, before qualifying for the primary begins. That way, they don't know who's going to be running, and they can't start jockeying and trying to pitch one against another and get their rhino into a general election. Well, I'm hoping, Danielle, that in the, in the, or the regular session, that this provision that allows no-party voters to vote in these, in these primaries is excised back out of it. Representative Amade suggested that she's going to work very hard with Representative Emerson to get, to get that out of here, because it really does totally dilute the process. But, but to your point more directly about the time limitation for switching parties. Now, you know, we already know that in a closed primary system, Democrats can vote in Democrat primaries, Republicans can vote in Republican primaries. So what's to keep, again, what's to keep a Democrat from switching to Republican simply to be able to vote for a rhino? So that's why it's so important, what you just said about the time limitation for being able to switch from Democrat to Republican or Republican to Democrat, before qualifying, before anybody knows who's going to be, before the public knows who's going to be running in those primaries. It's so important, otherwise it's just meaningless.
It is, it is. And you know, Chris, we talked to Senator Facy, who is my senator, and I like him very much, for the record, but he is the one who in the Senate brought the two amendments that weakened this bill. And we, I mean, we were pretty straightforward with him about our unhappiness with, with that. And he sits on the Senate Government Affairs, Senate and Government Affairs Committee, and he, he flat out told us, it got out of committee, but it was never going to pass on the Senate floor as is. And this was the best that they could do to get the bill through, get, basically get a piece of legislation completed in this special session. And so that, as disappointing as that is, what it tells us, and whenever we look at the numbers, I guess, we, we can see that it is the truth, that the Senate is a Republican majority, but again, it is not really a conservative majority, or it is not borne out to be a conservative majority yet. Otherwise, we would be in a very different position, I think, on both of these pieces of legislation.
No question about it. And, you know, I guess this is a start. This is a start because at least it says that only Democrats get to vote in Democrat primaries, only Republicans get to vote in Republican primaries. But when you're, when you have these opportunities for no-party voters, 600,000 of them, to come in and influence these party primaries, because they can vote for whoever they want, and when you have opportunities for Democrats to switch their party to Republican, so they can come in and sabotage the Republican primary, there's just too many holes in this, and it's not going nearly far enough to ensure the integrity of each party's primary system. There's just too many vulnerabilities in it. And I'm very glad that Representative Amade suggested, when we spoke to her recently, that when we go back in, in the regular session, she is going to work hard, along with Representative Emerson, to get, to bring this legislation again. And we have to put a lot of pressure on the Senate to leave these state legislatures within the purview of the closed primary and to eliminate the exception that allows no-party voters to vote in either a Democrat or Republican primary. And the argument that they put forward, Danielle, for allowing this to happen is that the no-party voters would be disenfranchised if it didn't happen that way. That is complete nonsense. As I think I said earlier, it's total nonsense. They're not being disenfranchised. It is not unconstitutional for a political party to impose reasonable requirements on your capacity to vote in their primary. And that requirement is simply to be a member of that party. And so that's where it is.
And just to go back to your point on Representative Amady and Senator Facy, when we spoke to Senator Facy, just to clarify, he, he did, if he wanted to weaken the bill himself, he could have done it in committee because he sits on the committee. But he did it on the House, on the Senate floor, which makes me believe that he was operating in good faith. I do think that he would work with us on, on this in the Senate side, again, to strengthen the bill again. But, but he, you know, wanted to start off with a couple of wins, and I think this, this gives a small win, but like you said, we've got to see some more teeth to this, we've got to make it meaningful, and we have to hold the legislators to account, both by having them in the legislation and not giving the pass to the rhinos in our, in our own legislature, right? And tightening up a couple of those pieces that you mentioned. And, and frankly, you know, when we were talking to a number of different legislators this week, they couldn't reiterate how much La Cag's presence was felt during this special session, the importance of La Cag being at the special session and being a visible force during legislative working hours. So thank you, Chris, for going down there. I know that you spent a lot of time down there, and you've had a lot of long conversations about some of these sticky issues, but we did get out to the other side of this.
Yeah, and I would like to be able to claim this as a, as an overwhelming victory, but that's not being honest with our listeners. It is a marginal, it is a marginal start in the right direction. And the marching orders for our listeners and our supporters, when the regular session comes up and this bill comes up, is to put major, major pressure, as we know how to do, on the Senate side to make sure that they do not once again dismantle what was originally a very good piece of closed primary legislation that really will enhance conservative candidates and, and increase the likelihood that real constitutional conservatives will be elected to the state legislature. It is, we have to have it, and I guarantee you that if we get it, there will be fewer rhinos in our state legislature and more real constitutional conservatives. So it's so important that we do it.
It is, it's, it's an important piece of us leading as a state nationwide. It's an important piece because it will ensure, as you said, Chris, that our values are reflected at the state legislature ultimately. This is a great foundational piece of, of legislation that, that we need to have that will set us up for years to come.
Yeah, and I don't understand why, again, I know why, because we still have rhinos in the legislature, but every other hour I sit and think, my gosh, we got two-thirds in both houses, why would they, why would the Senate not be eager to pass legislation that protects constitutional conservative candidates, gives people real choices in a Republican primary for the State House, and increases the likelihood that constitutional conservative candidates will win? Why would they not be eager to pass this? Well, we know the answer, and that is that we have still too many rhinos in our legislatures. So we still have work to do, but we will get it done.
Yes. And so a big thank you to everyone who has been supporting La Cag through this special session and looking toward the regular session, well, I guess another special session on crime, and then the regular session ahead. We can't thank you enough for being active and making the, doing the calls to action that we've laid out in pretty short order. A lot of these are on a tight timeframe, so we really appreciate you prioritizing those, sending the emails, making the calls, activating your family members, and, and making sure that our voice is heard.
Absolutely. We are so, so very thrilled, and we will have a lot of calls to action coming out. And Danielle, we know from the 2023 session, one of the issues with this special session is that it was so, so constricted, it was so fast, it was so tight.
And the, and the hours were very long. They start, you know, they went late at night.
Yeah, and they were putting these amendments on these bills and sending these maps in an hour before these hearings. The regular session, I'll tell you, we will have time to get good calls to action out and to make sure that those senators are heard from, because that's where it is. That is where it is. We've got to get it done on the Senate side. But I'm so thankful for our listeners, for La Cag, our State of Freedom listeners. I'm so excited about, about the session coming up and working on this legislation and, and a lot of other items of legislation, from ethics reform to Danny McCormick's concealed carry bill, to trying to get the nullification resolution enacted into positive law, just so many things that, that I'm excited about doing and working on. And we are developing the strength and the resources and the infrastructure to do it. Believe me, they know our name down there.
They do. And if you would like to support us as we continue to amplify these messages and bring great content to you across the state, you can do that at freedomstate.us. We'd love to hear from you. We'd love it if you would consider supporting the show there as well. And you can also send a check, if, if you prefer that method, to PO Box 861, Burge, Louisiana, B-O-U-R-G, Louisiana, 70343. And Chris, they can do the same at La Cag's website to support the work at the legislature.
Absolutely. Come on and make your donations, join us, support us, help us, because we are a citizens' organization. Our strict and sole loyalty is to the citizens of Louisiana, and that is the sole criteria by which we evaluate the quality of any piece of legislation. How does this affect ordinary citizens across the state of Louisiana? And how does this bear with the Constitution? Those two considerations, that's what we're doing, your eyes, your ears, and your voice. And we need your support. PO Box 64952, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 70896, or as we said, on the website, www.lacag.org.
Yes, and I don't want anyone to think that we're leaving on a sour note. We are encouraged, we believe that we can move things in the right direction. This was, I think, a bit of a bumpy start, but I'm very hopeful for what lies ahead. And the truth is that people have the power. So if we are active, we're engaged, we're voicing our, our opinions, we're calling our legislators, they will know and they're going to, they're going to respond. So, so please do be encouraged. We don't want you to leave this episode thinking that all is lost or that it's more of the same. I don't think it's more of the same. I think there's a lot of goodwill. This was, these were a few tough pieces of legislation that had to happen in short order, but I think the best is yet to come.
I do too, Danielle. Let me, let me, let me say this, the best, the best is yet to come, because this closed primary legislation, it is a start. And there have been a lot of pieces of legislation in the past that have passed and were improved upon in subsequent sessions. And I have strong reason to believe that that will happen here. And I just want to remind our listeners what Danny McCormick said when he came on the show. He said, "The key, the key to successful legislation that is faithful to the Constitution and to the citizens of Louisiana is relentless grassroots activism, relentless pressure on our elected officials." We've got to amp it up, we've got to be consistent and disciplined, and we will get everything that we deserve. John F. Kennedy said, "The people are the boss, and we will get the government that we demand and that we deserve." And that's where the activism and the relentless pressure comes in, and we'll get what we demand and what we deserve.
Yes, and we're so happy and excited to be fighting alongside you because we know that if you're listening to this, there's a very, very good chance that you're like-minded, that you're a patriot, and that you want what's best for this state. Before we leave, I would like to also mention an opportunity for any listener who may be interested in investing in precious metals or even starting a home-based business in precious metals. MetalStax is a precious metals collector's club where you can buy your metals at the best prices on the market, actual dealer cost. They are beating the big sites, and they have no credit card fees and no minimums. So if you're just interested in purchasing metals, you can visit metalstacks.com/gwalker, get to shopping, that helps me out, I get the commission. You can also refer people to MetalStax for an additional income. So if you're interested in learning about the referral aspect of the business, email me at danielle@freedomstate.us.
So happy to be participating in MetalStax with you, Danielle, and it's up, up, and away. What a tremendous opportunity. And I don't ever like to close the show, I know we've already mentioned it, without thanking, from the bottom of my heart and on your behalf, the many supporters and listeners of the State of Freedom across the state. We are revolutionizing the way political advocacy is done in Louisiana, simply by providing a broader and broader and broader voice to freedom, to liberty, to constitutional conservatism on a whole range of issues. And so your support of the State of Freedom by subscribing, by donating, by sharing the show, by listening to the show, sharing it with your friends, all of that helps us to continue to expand our reach across Louisiana and continue to become the voice that you can trust of constitutional freedom in Louisiana. And we are getting there and will continue to get there with your help.
God bless you, Chris.
God bless you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks for listening to the State of Freedom. To stay on top of all the calls to action we mentioned today, just check out the show notes for the episode. If you'd like to support the show financially, visit our website at freedomstate.us. If you'd prefer to gift by mail, you can send a check to the State of Freedom LLC at PO Box 861, Burge, Louisiana, 70343. If you own a business in Louisiana and are interested in supporting our show by advertising, please email us at info@freedomstate.us. To get involved with Louisiana Citizen Advocacy Group, visit lacag.org, L-A-C-A-G.org, or email chris@lacag.org. If you're enjoying the podcast, please subscribe and share it, give us a five-star rating in the reviews. Thanks again, everybody. We'll see you next time.